You're now being connected to tonight's special live telephone town hall meeting for the city of Fort Lauderdale on King Tides. Tonight's event is being coordinated by the city manager's office with assistance from the Office of Strategic Communications and Fort Lauderdale's very own Department of Public Works. Please welcome Fort Lauderdale's Assistant Director of Public Works, Dr. Nancy Gassman.
Hi, and thank you for coming to join the town hall meeting tonight. We will be discussing the recent events related to King Tides in our city over the last week or so. For our agenda, we'll be going through our recent King Tides. We will be talking about some of the mitigation efforts that the city has taken on, and we'll also be taking your questions and hopefully providing you some answers. Our first slide should show you the 2020 King Tides is the title on the slide. And what you see there is the expected tides that are happening over the course of the 2020 year. The red line that you see there is the average high tide for the year, and you'll notice that there's definitely a seasonality to the heights of the high tides across the year. The purple line shows the flooding threshold for the city, and you can see the blue arrow is showing you that during the fall season, we get regular high tides that go beyond that flooding threshold for some of the lower lying areas of the city. What should be on the screen at this point in time is a postcard that the city sends out to those neighborhoods that are particularly vulnerable for flooding. And in the green box, you'll see that the anticipated King Tide dates are provided, and we've just been through that very first one that started on September 16th. And you'll also notice that there's a smaller box that's highlighted there, and that's telling us that anytime we have a new moon phase or a full moon phase, that it's possible for us to get these more extreme high tides. So when you look at the tide profile for September of 2020, the blue line represents what the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration predicted for the heights of the tides that would be coming in during this time. And what you'll notice is that the red line deviates significantly from that predicted. That red line represents the observed or measured tide height as they came in. The last time the city's high tide was the same as the predicted high tide with September 3rd of this month. And what happened on Monday, September 21st, is that the peak tide came in 16 inches above predicted, and at an elevation that was similar to the storm surge that we experienced during Hurricane Dorian. And so we experienced one of the highest tides that we have seen in recent history over the course of the last two days. The next slide will show you the wind profile for September 21st. When we have winds out of the east, this can cause the tides to be higher than predicted, and because we had a tropical system that was just offshore, we had winds in the range of 20 knots coming out of the northeast, and this caused additional height on the tide. Also, whenever we have rainfall that's concurrent with those high tides, that also causes concerns and additional flooding in certain locations. So as you can see from this slide, the yellow X points out that we had this tropical system that was sitting right over the South Florida Peninsula, and anytime we have tropical storms, rainfall events, wind, all of those things can exacerbate the high tide. So in this slide, we're back to blue is the predicted tide and red is the experienced high tide. And so when you consider that the threshold for flooding was exceeded over the course of the last few days, the amount of time that the high tide ends up creating inundation in our low lying roadways will become longer the higher the tide is. And so, for example, on Sunday, we didn't experience quite such a high tide, and it lasted about two hours before and two hours after the peak tide, where we still had a tide that was high enough to cause inundation in low lying roads. On Monday, when we experienced that very extreme high tide, that lasted about five hours in terms of the time that the height of the tide stayed above the threshold for flooding. And one of the other things that happens when we have these much more extreme high tides is that the low tide also is raised, and as the low tide becomes higher, it creates other problems in the system, and I'll mention those as we go through the rest of this presentation. So we're going to shift gears from talking about what happened over the last few days in terms of the King Tide to talking about some of the mitigation efforts that the city takes in order to prepare our community for these tides, and also talk about some of the mitigation efforts that we will be looking at moving forward and investments that the city will be making. So one of the things that the city does very well is that they spend time communicating about these concerns. We have a dedicated website at fortlauderdale.gov/kingtide. We send out postcards to impacted locations. We send out information on social media. The mayor writes an annual letter about these concerns. We have put up variable message boards at critical locations to provide additional information about what's happening on the roadways. The city also puts out what we call delineators. These are orange poles that mark the edge of pavement wherever we have a roadway that is close to a canal. And that way, anyone who's driving on that roadway can see the difference between the roadway and the canal, even though there's water across both. And also, in select locations, we also put out no wake signs on the roadways. And we do this because as vehicles are moving very quickly across the roadway, they sometimes create a wake that ends up damaging private property. And so in those locations, we put up no wake signs to try to reduce the property impacts to those homes. We also are providing daily inspections in those areas that we know are vulnerable during peak tide to identify any potential concerns that are related to the infrastructure so that we can look to repairing that infrastructure or addressing those concerns once the tide goes down. So here are the numbers that are related to the work that we are doing at the city. This year, the commission chose to make resiliency in addressing long-term sea level rise and King Tides as one of its major priorities for this year. Annually, we're spending about $3 to $4 million on small to medium sized stormwater projects in order to reduce flooding throughout the city. Every one of our five recently developed infrastructure master plans incorporates sea level rise so that all infrastructure that the city is building moving forward will be built for the future conditions and will be resilient to these types of concerns. In addition, this year, the city commission allocated $70 million for stormwater improvements in those neighborhoods where we have very little infrastructure at this time. The city has installed 177 tidal valves, and I'll talk about that, more about that in just a minute, and we have over 3,000 feet of seawall being installed or under construction. And the top of that slide shows you the before and after pictures of the Isle of Palm seawall, which was recently completed and has been working very effectively at keeping these very extreme high tides off of the entryway to that neighborhood. Some of the future investments that we'll be making in the southeast Isles area, and that includes the Los Olas Isles on either side of Los Olas Boulevard, as well as the Isles in the Rio Vista neighborhood, we are planning to install two water quality structures, active pumping systems to help reduce flooding in those locations, an additional 134 tidal valves, over a mile of additional seawall replacement, 1,100 plus linear feet of new stormwater piping, and over 2,000 feet of swales and restoring the swales in the area to support drainage. And some of the projects that are part of this stormwater master plan improvement have been fast-tracked and will be addressed in the coming fiscal year. So the next slide highlights that we have those 177 tidal valves, and we began to install those in 2011. So the city's been very proactive over the years to try to address these concerns with tidal flooding. The next slide is showing you a typical house in South Florida and particularly in Fort Lauderdale. And what you'll see is that the way that we build our community, the yard is higher than the crown of the road, and any water that falls from the sky runs off the road or the yard, and it goes down into a storm drain. And then the storm drain conveys through a pipe to a local waterway. And so what has happened is that during a typical tidal state, the end of the pipe is above the water and is able to discharge water that is falling from the sky. But under these more extreme situations of high tide, the ends of the pipe get covered, and the salt water comes up our storm drain system and comes through the storm grate and starts to flood the roadway, which is why the city has been installing these tidal valves. What the tidal valves do is they prevent the salt water from being able to use the city's storm drain system to create flooding on the roadway. And then, once the low tide comes, the tidal valves are able to open and the water drains out. Now, we often get calls that say, "Well, my tidal valve's not working. It's raining, it's high tide. What's going on?" So what happens under those conditions is that when we have the rainfall, rain from the sky or water from the sky cannot get out when we have a high tide because it maintains the valve closed so that we don't get the salt water coming up the pipe, but at that point, the fresh water from the rainfall can't get out. But that doesn't mean that your tidal valve's not working. Your tidal valve is doing exactly what it was designed to do, which is to hold out the salt water. Once the tide becomes lower and frees the end of the pipe, the tidal valve is able to open and the rainfall is able to get out. And so when we have an extreme high tide and it's also raining during that peak tide, the tidal valves will open once the high tide starts going out, and it will release that water. But as many of you know on the phone, you're aware that we also have tidal flooding from seawalls overtopping. And what happens in this situation is that even though we have tidal valves in a number of these locations, the tidal valves are holding the water out, but the water is coming over the seawalls, over the yards, into the roadways, and they are backfilling the area with our, where our catch basins are. And this is true for some of the public seawalls, but also private seawalls. And so the city took aggressive action several years ago to adopt a seawall ordinance that holds private property owners responsible for allowing tidal flows to leave their property. And so resilience in our city really becomes a public-private partnership. The city needs to take care of its infrastructure, and our neighbors need to make sure that their infrastructure is not damaging or causing impacts onto the city's roadways or to their adjacent neighbors. And so what you'll see here, and I mentioned this, that the low tide sometimes during these more extreme high tides actually is elevated as well. If during the low tide, the low tide doesn't allow the end of the pipe to clear because the low tide is so much more elevated as well, we'll sometimes get a situation where the water on the roadway is not able to discharge even during low tide because the low tide has come in so very high. And this gives you a very general overview of how our systems work and how the infrastructure that we've been installing is improving our situation with King Tides in ways where it will reduce the intensity, duration, and frequency of the flooding throughout a number of areas. So with that, we just want to remind everybody that the anticipated King Tides that we're currently experiencing will probably last a little bit longer, probably through Friday of this week, and we have provided for the dates of the upcoming King Tides. And if anyone has questions or concerns related to flooding, they can always call our 24/7 customer service line at 954-828-8000. Or if you want to learn more about King Tides, you can go to fortlauderdale.gov/kingtide. And with that, I'll end my presentation, and we can start to consider questions.
Thank you, Dr. Gassman. Our first question this evening is coming from a gentleman named Steve, and he says, "When the seawall along Cordova Road is complete, will the water table behind that seawall rise during high tide? Or does the fact that the seawall panels are driven deep to about 27 inches prevent a rise in the water table behind that seawall?" That's Steve's question.
So generally speaking, the fact, the city has built that specific seawall to try to reduce those types of impacts from groundwater so that we've, we have driven the sheet pile very deep into the bedrock in order to reduce that type of flow back and forth between the groundwater and the seawall. So it should substantially reduce any impact that the tidal flow would have, given that we have a much taller seawall there now.
Okay. Doctor, our next question is coming from Susan Migdal in the Rio Vista neighborhood. This individual is on the corner of 12th Street and Cordova Road. They're telling us that the tide is streaming into the backyard of a corner home there, and would like to know what sort of advice you would give residents in that area.
So that specific home has recently raised their seawall in response to a city citation associated with the seawall ordinance. And if there are continuing to be concerns with that seawall, we will work with that neighbor to try to resolve those. We are still working on the city's connection between that private seawall and the brand new city-owned seawall on Cordova, and hopefully we'll be able to address those concerns as we move forward.
Our next question is coming to us from Alexa. Alexa says, "Northeast 20th Avenue floods regularly. Would the city consider closing the street during floods to detour traffic away from our homes? What are our options?"
So the city tries to make sure that we keep as many of the roads open as possible because the King Tide event is approximately four hours of a wet roadway and then the roadway is dry. And when we've, when we've tried to close roads down during King Tides in the past, there's been a frustration in the neighborhood because the traffic ends up backing up, and people don't understand why we're, the roadway is closed if it's completely dry. And so we are, we are looking at a case-by-case basis when we have these types of events. And I just want to remind everybody that this event was predicted to come in 16 inches lower than it came in, and so a lot of the flooding that we were, that we have experienced over the last couple of days was much greater than what we had anticipated.
Our next question is from Julianne Maharis. She'd like to know, "How many feet high are you allowed to raise your seawall or dock?"
Great question. The city's ordinance sets both a minimum and a maximum. The minimum is set to make sure that we are putting our seawalls in at a height that will address future conditions. The maximum is set so that seawalls are not so high that they will cause a profile which will result in water from the sky running back and causing flooding into the home. And so it depends on the individual property's base flood elevation. That determines how high they can put in their new seawall.
All right, Dr. Gassman, we're now going to take a question from one of our telephone participants this evening. Let's bring Suzie on the line. Suzie, go ahead with your question for Dr. Gassman about temporary watersheds.
Hi, Dr. Gassman. I just wanted to ask about temporary watersheds. I know that you, I think there's, you have one, or there's, you have a couple, and I was just wondering if you're starting to use, you're going to start using, transferring the water, like with pipes, to some of these sheds so that you can move the water from the storage shed and back.
So Suzie, thank you for your question. You're referring to the River Oaks Stormwater Park. Part of the $70 million in investment that I recently mentioned is so that we can transfer stormwater in the River Oaks neighborhood over to the stormwater park, which will provide a water quality aspect to that stormwater process. And it also gives us a holding area so that we can appropriately be able to move water off and away from the homes and then use our pump station that we'll be installing at that location to move the water out. So yes, those types of stormwater areas are a useful method that we can use to control some stormwater, and in certain locations in the city, it's an appropriate way for us to go.
All right, Dr. Gassman, our next question is coming from one of our web participants. William Stacy says he's noticed that the tide is coming in under the steel pilings along Cordova between 11th Street and 11th Court. Can you provide some more insight?
Yeah, so the construction of that seawall is not complete, and when it is complete, that area will not be flooding the way that they are currently noticing it. When you go to the Isle of Palm seawall, which is the one that we completed in August of this year, that, both the swell area landward of that seawall as well as the roadway is completely dry. And so it's a matter of completing the work and construction that we're doing on Cordova in order to get the reduced flooding impact that we're looking for by raising that seawall.
Our next question is from Javier. Javier is asking, "The city has apparently recently installed a tidal valve on his street, but now when it rains, his street is flooding. He's concerned the valve is broken. Is that accurate?"
So as I explained in my presentation, one of the challenges that we have is that we often get calls that my tidal valve is broken because there's water on my street. And the tidal valves are not able to open during a peak tide if it's raining. And so as long as the water is going down, as the tide goes down, what you're really seeing is not that the tidal valve is malfunctioning, it is in fact doing exactly what it's designed to do, which is to keep the tide out. That said, sometimes we do have a malfunction in the valve, and anyone who is concerned should call our 8000 number, that's 954-828-8000, and report that concern to our customer service representatives, and we'll be able to go out and do an additional inspection and make sure that everything is working correctly.
Dr. Gassman, we are now going to the telephone for our next question, and the person joining us is Mark. Mark, you live on the east side. Are you on the line with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Mark. What's your question?
My question is regarding, what kind of work is being done that will ensure that the coast is safe and durable during sea level rise?
So Mark, sounds like you're asking for kind of the doctor to give you a readout on some of the city's general efforts to combat sea level rise, correct?
I'm a person who is blind. I live on East Los Olas, and I hope to live the rest of my life here, yes.
Okay. Well, go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Gassman.
Thank you. In the southeast Isles area, which includes all of the Los Olas Isles, the city will be investing significant dollars in improving the stormwater drainage system there, including the installation of two pump stations. And those two pump stations will make a significant difference in keeping the area dry during more extreme rainfall events and help in addressing certain concerns related to tidal flooding. We're also planning to raise the number of the seawalls along that area, which will also prevent seawalls from breaching, and it'll keep the road much drier.
Thank you, Mark. Hope we were able to answer your question. Our next question is from Kathy. Kathy is from the Rio Vista neighborhood, and she says, "The city was going to make suggestions for homeowners to be a little more resistant to the weather that comes our way. For those of us who live in the lowlands, we automatically flood. What are we as a city going to make suggestions other than raising our seawalls to be more climate resilient?" That's Kathy's question.
That's a great question. Part of what happens in any community is as various areas begin to rebuild or people add additions to their home, they have to come up to the newest codes. And so what we're witnessing throughout a number of our neighborhoods, especially the low lying areas, is that as people are redeveloping and creating the community of the future, they're raising their homes so that those elevations that were so low previously, the new homes now meet the new FEMA requirements for the floodplain. And so that's part of the natural evolution of a community, and we're seeing that in a number of areas.
We have a question from Julia. She'd like to know what's being done to stop flooding on San Marco, Lido, and the other streets.
So as part of the city's effort to try to learn how to deal with these emerging issues, we installed some berms around the seawalls in that location, which have been very helpful in addressing the tidal flooding. When is that, a certain elevation? Again, the recent sea level rise, the recent King Tide was so high that it breached those berms. Those three seawalls that are in those locations are three of the seawalls that we have prioritized to elevate over the course of the next 12 to 18 months.
Let's go back to the telephone now. We have Greta. Greta is calling us from Los Olas Islands. Hello, Greta. What is your question for Dr. Gassman?
My question is that my seawall is 1.5 elevation. In order to bring it in compliance, as far as I know, it needs to go to 3.9 feet. My, however, the lowest level of my house is 2.7. If I raise my seawall, which I would like to do, but to the compliance of the city, that means the water is going to run backwards right into my house. This is an old little house on Los Olas Boulevard.
So the, when the city wrote the seawall ordinance, we were aware that there were homes that had lower finished floor elevations, and there's a special waiver in the code that allows for an adjustment of the maximum required height based on the finished floor elevation of the home.
Hopefully, Greta, that was able to provide you some insight. Remember, if you have questions about these things, please feel free to interact directly with the city by calling us at 954-828-8000. That's our 24-hour number where we can assist you with issues such as this. We'll be getting to a few more of our callers in a moment, but first, we're going to take a question from our web team, and we have a question from Alan. He says, "I think my storm drain is clogged. Who can I call to check it and get it unclogged?"
If you call our 8000 number, that's 954-828-8000, provide your name, your address, and the location of the concern, the city will send out someone to perform an inspection, and if a repair or maintenance is needed, they will conduct that repair or maintenance.
The next question is coming from Robert. He'd like to know, "How long are we going to have these King Tides? Do they last through the end of hurricane season?"
Also a great question. As I noted early in my presentation, they are predictable in terms of their timing, and the city has provided that information on our website at fortlauderdale.gov/kingtide. The King Tide we're currently experiencing is likely to be finished at the end of the week, Friday or Saturday. The tide levels should go back to being lower than the city's threshold for low lying areas. The next King Tide is expected to be coming in the timeframe of October the 14th. A normal King Tide lasts for about three to five days, but because this one was so much higher than predicted, it's going to last a little bit longer.
We're going to go back to the telephone now. We have Evelyn on the line. She is from Harbor Inlet. Evelyn, go ahead for Dr. Gassman.
Yes, I am concerned about the fact that apparently iguanas can burrow behind seawalls, and I don't have one personally, but I worry about those not too far from me who do, and cause them to collapse. Is there any, and I know that iguanas are very, very difficult to get rid of, so I wonder if there's any plan for that kind of problem.
So we would, we would address that type of problem under, under the seawall ordinance where the property owner is required to maintain their seawall in good repair. There are engineering methods. One of them is called flowable fill. This is a sand mixture that hardens, not quite as hard as concrete, but it's able to be poured in behind the seawall, and that can both prevent iguanas from digging behind it, and it also can stabilize the seawall. But that's just one potential method to use.
We have another caller, Anne on Hendrix Isle. Good evening, Anne. You're on with Dr. Gassman. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, I live on Hendrix Isle, on the Point, and we were mandated by the city to raise our seawall, which we did, and so did our neighbor across the street. But between the two properties, there's a 250 or so foot piece of property that belongs to the city where the seawall has not been raised, and we had our entire parking lot flooded on Sunday, and, you know, and that continues to happen. Are there any plans to raise the city's seawall at the end of Hendrix Isle, on the Point of Hendrix Isle? Thank you. And if not, what must we do to ask that that property be added to the city's list? Thank you very much.
So the seawall on Hendrix, there's actually two. There's one at the very end of the street, and there's also one to the west of the Point. Both of those seawalls were incorporated into the stormwater master plan. The funding that would support working forward to pay for the $200 million that we need in order to completely implement the stormwater master plan was recently approved by the city commission at our budget meeting on September 14th. And so those two seawalls are included in that stormwater master plan, and the funding has now been cleared for us to start moving forward. But I want you to know that on Hendrix, there is a privately owned seawall that is just to the south of the city-owned seawall that is lower and is currently breaching. And so the initial flooding that you're seeing at that end of Hendrix is actually being caused by a private seawall.
Dr. Gassman, our next question is coming from William Stacy. On 12th Street, many properties have raised their seawalls. However, we've noticed, especially yesterday, that our street is being flooded by the However, we've noticed, especially yesterday, that our street is being flooded by the canal pouring in over the seawall in the Lauderdale Yacht Club on the north side. What is the city doing to address this issue?
That impact was noticed last year, and the yacht club was cited, and is required to take certain mitigation actions to address that concern.
All right, we have another question. This is also coming from another William. He says he's in Las Olas Isles. "The inability of the pipes with the valves to drain when there is a low tide that exceeds the height of the pipe is concerning. How do we know which flooding is from what? Are they in known areas? Is there a list? Where can they find public information on flooding from king tides?"
That's a great question. We recently put out an advisory for travel, which noted where there are specific streets or neighborhoods where we're having these types of impacts. I want to remind the caller that the times that we are unable to drain from those tidal valves have to do if there's a seawall that's breaching nearby or if there's water from another source such as rainfall.
Our next question comes to us from a telephone caller. We have Charles on the line. He is in Rio Vista. Hello, Charles. Go ahead with your question for Dr. Gassman.
So on 7th Street of the Isles, the seawall, everything seems to be happening to the south of 7th. Are they going to fill in that little six-foot gap that floods the intersection of 7th and Cordova?
Yeah, the original design for the Cordova Road seawall stopped at 7th, and we realized that there was an additional gap on the other side of 7th, and we have put in for the additional permitting and work order to address that area as well.
Our next question is from Steve Puskowski in Fort Lauderdale. And Dr. Gassman, Steve would like to know, "Why not install pumps at strategic locations along Cordova Road to pump out the rainwater over the seawall during the heavy rain events that seem to be combined with the king tides?"
So the city conducted a $10 million stormwater master planning activity where we did a significant investigation of, an inventory of what we had out there. We developed some additional modeling of the entire city, and we also developed brand-new high-resolution elevation data. And based on all of that information, our consultants developed the stormwater master planning. And so, in areas where they felt that pumps were a critical component in order to provide a reasonable level of service, we are installing those pumps. And Cordova Road was not one of those areas where they had recommended for pumps to be installed.
Our next question is coming from a caller in, this is apparently near Las Olas. "I noticed that the tide is coming in under the steel pilings along Cordova between 11th Street and 11th Court. What can be done?"
So again, that seawall's not complete, and when it is complete, that won't happen.
We have another question coming in from Lori. Lori would like to know, "What is the mitigation plan for the Riverland community?"
So Riverland is an area in the southwest portion of the city. Currently, we are pursuing improvements in seven different neighborhoods. The Riverland neighborhood is in our next phase of the stormwater master planning activities. It's an area that we will be investigating in the next few years and developing design plans to improve drainage in that area.
Dr. Gassman, our next question comes to us from the telephone. It is Sean. Sean is in Rio Vista with a question about what's happening on 7th Street Isles. Go ahead, Sean. You're on with the doctor.
Hello, how are you? My question's pretty quick. We, as a neighborhood, put in tidal valves back about five years ago that the neighbors all kind of contributed to pay for. In the past few days, we've seen that they haven't been very effective, so we're thinking that it would be great if we had the city installed tidal drains, which we've known that there's been some success in some of the other streets in Rio Vista.
The city is planning to install 134 new tidal valves in the area of the southeast Isles, which includes the Rio Vista Isles. And I would have to check to make sure that your street is included, but for the time being, now that I'm aware of it, that's something that I can check on.
Dr. Gassman, we have this question coming in from George Cog. "Is there a map showing city seawall improvement priorities and timelines? Where can we get this information?"
So on the city's website, if you Google "master plans," there is a list of all the master plans for city infrastructure, and there's a seawall master plan, and there's a table that lists our current priorities. Not all the seawalls are listed that we are currently pursuing. For example, the Hendrix Isle seawall is not on that table, but it's one that we will be improving. But that's a good starting place to see where the seawalls are and how they've been prioritized.
Our next question is from Kathy in Rio Vista. Hello, Kathy. You're on with Dr. Gassman. Please go ahead.
Hi there. To tag on to my last question, way back a long time ago, the city was trying to implement the program to give rain barrels away to people so that when it rains, the rain can collect from the gutter, and at the end of the line, it would go down into a rain barrel. Also, big cities like New York and Chicago tried to implement a program of putting those rain barrels on the rooftops of big buildings so that the rainfall wouldn't fall into their streets and flood their sidewalks and the streets. Can the city do something like that to prevent, to preserve the rain when it's at high tide so that it doesn't flood the streets and the parking lots?
The city can certainly encourage private homeowners to consider if they want to install a rain barrel. Rain barrels are a little more challenging in South Florida because we have mosquitoes and other insects that can cause disease in the area, and so, standing water that would be in a rain barrel is a little more challenging. But those choices have to be made by the private property owner if that's one of the things that they want to pursue. But you're absolutely right, a number of communities are using that type of technology, and that's certainly something that the city could consider moving forward.
Pamela would like to know, "Can the city tell me the top elevation of my seawall, or do I need to get my own survey to determine the proper height?"
Private homeowners would have to either look at a survey that exists, or they would need to get a new survey done in order to be able to determine what the height of their existing seawall is. If they've had any work done at their house in the last 10 years or so, those plans, as long as they came in for a permit, those plans would be available at our Department of Sustainable Development, and they could come request the surveys that were submitted with their building plans.
We're going to go back to Sean from Rio Vista. He's come in with another question about the Cordova project. Go ahead, Sean. You're on with Dr. Gassman.
Thank you. My next question is, "When you're done with the seawall phase of the project and you go into the repaving of Cordova, will Cordova be raised in terms of the elevation, and then will there also be a pedestrian sidewalk that's on the seawall side of the road?"
So when we were developing the project for the Cordova seawall, we looked at the opportunity to put a sidewalk in, and unfortunately, because of the way that the utility lines run in that area, there's not adequate room for us to put a sidewalk in. And Sean, what was the first part of your question?
Doctor, I think we've lost Sean, but he was just looking for some specifics on that specific project about a sidewalk.
Yeah, so yeah, we looked into putting sidewalks in, and we weren't able to work that into the plan.
Okay. Sergio from Fort Lauderdale has a question about infiltration under the seawall. Sergio is having that problem on Mola Avenue in Las Olas Isles, especially as you enter the community off to the left side.
So specifically on Mola, there's a concern with a private seawall that is allowing tidal flows to go through it, and that's another situation where the city has taken code enforcement action to try to resolve that issue.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gassman. A reminder to everyone that you can find information from the city of Fort Lauderdale on king tides at a very easy-to-get-to address, Fort Lauderdale.gov/kingtide. If you have other additional questions, we encourage you to call our 24-hour resident answer number. It's (954) 828-8000. And one of our hard-working public servants from the city of Fort Lauderdale will be able to help you with your question. Dr. Gassman, can you take us to the finish line with some parting thoughts?
This king tide that we've experienced over this week has revealed a number of significant concerns, and we always learn from these different types of events. And moving forward, we'll be able to address concerns with the city infrastructure and work with our neighbors to try to resolve the issues with private infrastructure as well. Encourage everyone to continue to be careful as they drive around our city and remind them that salt water is on the roadway. Drive slow. Be kind to your neighbors so that you're not driving water up into their properties. And please, if there's water on the road, it's better not to drive through it. Better be safe than get your car stuck or create other problems. So we encourage our neighbors to stay safe, to drive with care, especially when there's standing water, and know that the city is making investments to try and improve this situation incrementally every year moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Gassman, and thank you to all of you who participated in tonight's live telephone and online virtual forum. This has been a presentation of the City of Fort Lauderdale City Manager's Office, Office of Strategic Communications, and Department of Public Works.